Thank you. All right, um, we've got the agenda in front of us. I think everybody can see it with ten items on it. Rohit, you wanted something else added to the agenda?
That's correct, yes. I wanted to add a discussion. To propose that um, we endorse uh, the letters from the Montgomery County Civic Federation and Citizens Coordinated Committee for Friendship Heights regarding zoning text amendment twenty-five-two. Um, with a view to hopefully um, transmitting our endorsement of those letters to the county council. So if we could introduce that today and discuss it and perhaps take the decision at the next council meeting, which would then be sufficient time for the county councils planning, housing and parks committee discussions in July. Thanks.
All right, we need a second for that to be, all right, okay. So we can add it at the end of the meeting then before the adjournment. All right. So we all have the agendas, can we I'm gonna propose a motion for the agenda to be approved.
Go.
Second, right, all in favor?
I agree.
Okay, so first item uh, is discussion on the ordinances introduced to the June second council meeting. And um, there are several. So. Oh, that's not, that's not one of them. Here we go, it's the biomass removal biomass is one, and this is now the updated um version of the or, if you remember at the meeting, uh, we were shown an old version of the ordinance that has now been cleaned so that it it is the appropriate ordinance. Um, and.
And tennis courts shows up in paragraph P on page four, which was that, yeah, the primary edit from the last meeting.
Okay, um, all right, so. Any questions about the changes that have been introduced now? We've discussed this quite thoroughly um at the last meeting and in the prior work session, in fact. And again, it's simple in concept, which is it's to extend the Montgomery County pesticide ban to our own town parks. They are already, it's already in county parks and and it's in our own town residences and yards that the ban applies, but the ban doesn't apply to our parks. This extends it to our parks. But we also tweaked the rest of the language in the ordinance, that's why it got a bit complicated. All right, so are we all happy with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, then we can move on. Um. The next ordinance is the one that is just as new. Uh, we did talk about it. This is uh a real property disclosure announcement that we would arrange for realtors to give to prospective buyers um, that says what our town is and does. So it goes over the fact that we have a council and um it says that we are building ordinances and um it says that we don't allow short-term rentals and that we have stormwater requirement um, that we take our trees seriously. And that's, that's most of it, actually.
I've.
So, yes. Go ahead.
Okay, on the short term, you know, um, the short, the word, the term short term?
Yeah.
Well, I don't, what is short term? I know I, I have a thought on what short term could be, but.
No, it's the law, it's, it's whatever our law is regarding um, the um, you know, those um Airbnbs. It's just so that, it's just so that prospective purchasers know that we did not opt in to the county allowing, the county allows Airbnb's, we do not.
Okay, I'm not sure that that was so. I, I saw that later on, but it just, the word short term, I just thought.
Well, that's, I think what, I think the town attorney can address that. That's what it's, that's what the law, that's what it's called in the law, right, Mr. Town Attorney?
Yeah, yeah, I think, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think if I understand Councilmember Heller's concern, the disclosure doesn't define what short term means. So we could certainly add a definition, short term is anything under thirty days.
And we could also say that this includes Airbnb's.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
So, so Councilmember Heller, this document, the, the town attorney has suggested that this needs to be passed as an ordinance. But whatever document that we come up with has to go through a whole process with the uh, Greater Association associate, G-Car, the Greater Capital Area Association of Realtors, because they have recommended forms. But also, I think, and the town attorney can, can say, I think this would also require that any transaction that, any transaction in the, in the town, so if, if, if there's a private transaction where they don't use a G-Car form, that they would have to have this addendum that we, isn't that right, Mr. Town Attorney?
That's right, Mr. Mayor, yeah, the, the addendum or disclosure would apply regardless of whether or not you're using a Realtor or a G-Car form.
Yeah. So, so the idea, counsel, is that, that anything that you think is of particular importance, that, that new purchasers are alerted to when they buy their house, then please suggest that we add it, because the form can be as long, it does, it, it can be as long as anyone thinks is, you know, anything is a good idea, as far as I'm concerned, to throw in there.
Okay, I got it.
All right, um, so ideas, yes, Rohit.
Yeah, thanks. Um, Ron, thanks very much for drafting this. Um, so I have few suggestions and a couple of uh, questions.
Okay.
Regarding the questions, just, just, just to clarify, this is um, similar to what the town of Chevy Chase is doing.
That's correct.
Any other jurisdictions that are doing similar things? That's, I just want to clarify, so it's, it's along those lines.
To Comer Park, To Comer Park does it, Rockville does it, Gaithersburg does it that I know, then I guess Garrett Park and.
Yeah, Garrett Park's a client of mine, and I'm, I'm not aware of the other ones, so I'm glad the mayor.
Yeah, well.
Chevy Chase does, okay. Okay, um, so just a few um, suggestions for things to. One is in um, on the second page in paragraph C, there is a reference to the services the town provides. Um, and it says there's supplemental public safety. Um, I'm not really entirely sure what the reference there is to, because we, we actually are not providing any supplemental public safety services, I guess, in the form of.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, that's, yeah, that's right, I forgot.
What I, but what I would suggest is.
Yeah. Delete that.
Facing that with perhaps something along the lines of uh, roads and sidewalk maintenance and parks and recreational facilities, which are things that we do provide. Um, just for comprehensiveness in that paragraph. The second suggestion I was going to make is that in the paragraph on notice of water drainage requirements, um, I'm fine as written, but I wonder if it is necessary to point out that in certain cases the town council has required homeowners to install certain stormwater drainage, I don't know what the correct technical term is, systems and so on and so forth. How does that information transfer from one owner to the next? Because twenty years ago, twenty years from now, when all of us, except perhaps Kabir and Shannon, uh, will be gone from the council, what, uh, I mean, who, who knows what.
Twenty years.
What is going on?
Yeah, so.
The, the youngsters on this, on this group.
Yeah, so your code currently requires a water drainage system maintenance and inspection agreement to be recorded in land records when a plan is compelled by the council. So when the transaction occurs, meaning a sale, transfer of the property, the title attorney will do a title search and the agreement will, will show up, should show up.
Okay.
And be reported on the list of, of items that are exceptions to the, the insurance title.
Okay.
Um, I'm sorry, title insurance. Yeah, and so the, the, we'll be notified there. As a practical matter, most buyers don't actually read their title insurance. So if you wanted to reference it here, we, we could certainly do that. We could say, please note that the property you're buying may be subject to a water drainage maintenance agreement and you're encouraged to review land records or something like that.
Okay, I mean, I would, I would suggest uh, that we do that if others agree, um, just for, again, as Jeffrey said, you know, it's, there's no harm in adding a couple of extra lines there. The last point I wanted to make is on um, I don't know whether it goes in notice of urban forest requirements or standalone paragraph by itself. The um, as you know, the town code has got certain um, provisions regarding plantings in the town's right of way. And I would like to see in this draft um, a reference to, I think that's, if I have it right, it's section one fifty-five, one, B two and B three and C. I'll leave it to you in drafting how to put it in there, but I think it's important that new homeowners are aware that um, these plantings are on town property, the town's right of way, uh, and that they're subject to certain code, code text there, so that someone just doesn't move in, plants anything they want in that front yard without following the rules. So, um, and then my last, my last question is, um, I noticed that is, is, is question of the moving process, the moving in process. Um, and I don't know how new homeowners are made aware, for example, on Sunday, um, the new, the new residents in fifty-five oh five Uppingham had a large moving truck parked on the no parking side for several hours. And there was no, there was no, you know, moving trucks sign that the town usually puts up there. Um, so I don't know whether this is something that we can put in there that prior to moving in, check in with the town hall regarding requirements for pa, I don't know what, parking and whatever.
Well, I, I think that they're, they, that the town attorney can come up with some catch-all catch-all paragraph about that there are, you know, that the town owns this and operates the streets and, and that we regulate parking, you know, something like that is a catch-all.
Yeah, because things like the storage pods, moving trucks.
Yeah.
So, so for these are regulated in some way.
Yeah, I think that can be.
Nobody knows that until.
Yeah, I think, I mean, that's the whole point, is that you want to put in what is specific to the town. I, I also think that we should put something in there that, that um, new homeowner, that, that all residents should register with the town hall or something.
Okay, well, that's, those are my comments. Thanks very much.
But I think those, I think those are all great ideas. And, and I would urge, you know, council members between the time that this is introduced and the time that it's um, voted on to think about what other specific provisions of, of our law that, that are, are different than the county, that, that it might create problems for people.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things I thought of was, do we want to mention the school zone that we have, but it there are restrictions on traffic in that area during school hours, which you don't necessarily know.
Well, that again is a, that again goes like a catch-all to, to the um to those regulations, but um yes, definitely. It's all good, because, because if this is, if this is cha, if the, if this is implemented and in the future, if there's something that needs to be corrected, it could be amended. So this is a good base to start. It's really good, it's really, really a good idea, the council member Connaught.
Okay, um, and any other thoughts at the moment from, from folks?
Um, yeah, I had a, a suggestion for the notice of building regulations section, Ron. Uh, this that for the urban forest requirement section, you have a few sentences regarding the hearing process. I wondered if that needed to be also added in for the building regulations, building permit process, that there, there are hearings, there's a potential for seeking variance. Uh, it might be good to include that. And this is a minor thing, but as, as I was reading this, I, I would have preferred to have the sentence, building permits are required by the town for buildings dash, 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 to be the second sentence. So it's right up front, we say we require permits, and this is what we require them.
So, under the notice of building regulations, does building permits are required by both the town and the county?
And then the next sentence, I'm suggesting the next sentence be, what is your current third sentence? So as I was reading this, just the sequence of things I would like to know right away is, we require permits in addition to the county, and then we require them for all of these things.
Gotcha, okay.
And then you have the third sentence, special building requirements to preserve green space, et cetera. And then my other suggestion was, if it makes sense, to maybe a sentence or two on the hearing process and the variance possibility.
Okay.
I only say that because I noticed you did detail that for the urban forest requirements.
Okay.
Shannon, did you have something?
No, I agree um, with Rohit's um, comments about um adding in like those various elements.
All right, all right. And so the, the idea is that we should look over it again and be ready with any other comments by the time we come to the council meeting um, in July.
So, do you want me to make these changes in the interim? President Barr, or are you saying?
I, I, yes, go ahead, please, and make the changes that are noticed, that, that have been reported in the interim.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
All right, um. We have tackled selling. The next question is rentals, uh, because we have a number of um properties that are rented for some period of time in town. And there are things renters should know too, but it's not the full set of stuff. Um, in other words, they don't really need to know about building regulations, because they're not going to build anything, but they do need to know about parking regulations, you know, that are real. Um, and so what we want to convey in a rental disclosure is what it comes down to.
If they have like a fact sheet, you put together a fact sheet, so they know to register at the town hall, there's a pool, they know what the parking regulations are, they, they know whatever hour, you know, about snow removal, you know, whatever.
Right, compost pickup, that kind of thing.
How you sign up to get, get the compost and blah, blah, blah.
Right.
I mean, I guess we're gonna have like a helpful document, but it's really the, you know, it's the um own homeowner, like a lot of people don't have, you know, official rental things, like going through like the signing process.
And sometimes it goes through a Realtor the same way that um.
Yeah, but most, I mean, so, in some instances, sure, but like not, you know, sometimes just people rent their houses out themselves and.
Yeah, but, but councilmember, councilmember um, Rovak, you know that when you rent out the house yourself, you're still supposed to get a license.
Oh.
And, and you're, and you're supposed to use a lease, obviously, and it's recommended that you use a lease. The, the, there's a lease that's recommended by both the county office, th, this lease, the, the rental lease is recommended by, jointly by the Realtors Association and the county office. And so thi, thi, this is really a protection for, for the um the people that are, the landlords, is to make sure, because if you don't follow all the procedures, you can really lose out. For example, you can, you might forfeit rent if you don't properly follow the, the laws that protect tenants, for example.
Yeah, but I mean, whose responsibility would it be to share this disclosure with a previous, like, with a potential rental, renter?
So there, there are two ways to do it.
Go ahead, uh, let's let the, let's say, let's let the town attorney explain it better.
There's generally two ways to do it. You could have a, a voluntary helpful document, as you said, Councilmember Rovak, or as I think President Barr and Mayor Slavin are suggesting, you could by law require a lease addendum that would say, anytime property is rented, the following addendum must be attached to your lease. Homeowners' associations and condominium associations often do that, so that tenants are aware of the house rules. And so that the town could do it as well. So the other question is, do you want it to be legally required or not? And if it's legally required, we could amend this same ordinance to say, and, you know, the following addendum shall be attached to a lease agreement. And there too, you could decide what's, what's in and out.
I mean, I personally don't think it should be legally required for a rental. I mean, I think it's up to the person, the homeowner, you know, to follow the proper procedure. But I don't think we should make them have this requirement. That's my own view.
But the, but the fact of the matter is, is that the law is the law and it to, in order to prevent problems, it's better if we give them the notice of these things. It's not, it's not that much of a burden to ask somebody to, to add this sheet as an addendum to, you know, it's, it's better, it's, it's providing more information for everybody, so that they follow the rules. You know, a lot of times people that rent and break the rules in the town is because they didn't know. So it's better if they know from the beginning. So I don't really view this as a burden. This is something that's going to be helpful to everybody.
Protect all of us.
I mean, the other way to look at it is that there are new entrants to the town. We are declaring to homebuyers, these are the rules, which we just discussed. How do we let the renters know these are the rules? So it's, I think effectively the same thing. Unfortunately, that's the only channel, is to be able to get it through the landlords, right? We can't do it the other way.
But can you ask, can you ask the what, sorry, just to clarify, what are these rules?
A friendly thing.
What are, what are, what are these rules we're referring to? Because I know what the rules are regarding sales, it's tree removal, stormwater management, et cetera, et cetera. Not one of these things is applicable to renters. No renter is going to take a tree down without, without the homeowner's permission.
Right.
Well, we could let them know.
Parking, parking rules are applicable to renters.
That's what I'm asking.
Well, you should also know about the school zone.
I, I, I do think that the, the provisions that Councilor Connaught was talking about regarding vegetation on the sidewalks should be in the rental uh, addendum, because i, in many rental contracts, the tenant is required for the la, you know, to landscaping and, and the lawn. So I think that should be included. And certainly, as councilmember Heller was talking about, pool rules and all that kind of stuff should definitely be in the tenant, in the tenant thing. And probably in both of them. But, but definitely in the tenant, because just, just think about how many people violate the rules because they didn't know. And this way, you're just putting them on notice.
Yeah.
When they move in. It's not, you know, let's, let's look at all this as very positive and not being harmful or, or taxing on anybody.
Yeah. Well, as, as someone who actually does have rental property in the town, and I think you've convinced me that there's I think there's advantage to having such an addendum.
Oh, right, you're a landlord, I forgot.
All right, so we should also work on that. And Ron, do you want to try a first draft or what?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I do want, I do want to ask the, the staff, have you, have you advised uh, the Realtors Association that you're um that this is going to be forthcoming?
No, we've not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, yeah, I think it'd be good to to find out what the pro, the process is these days.
Okay, yeah, yes. Recently did it for the town of Chevy Chase, and I will go back and see who the contact was, and we can reach out to that same person, hopefully, and say, yeah, we have another one coming.
Yeah, and it's the same with the, the um Office of Landlord Tenant Affairs, because they, these, I think these leases are, like I said, were jointly approved. They were in my day, and I can't imagine that's any different.
Right, yeah, there, Mr. Mayor, I would not envision asking the county to change its form lease, rather, we would develop our own separate page that the landlord.
No, 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 I think it's the same, no, no, that, there's a form lease, and then there's denims for the different municipalities. But I think it's a form that's approved by the, the county and the, and G-Car. But anyway, we'll work on that later, more on it later, yeah.
Okay, all right, um. So we're still on resolutions, and this one is different, though. So this is to expand composting service to the Somerset Pool. And um, who wants to lead it? Kabir, did you?
Yeah, I think I'm in favor of this. Um, my big question would be, you know, obviously, the volume of waste from the pool is significantly larger than from any single home. So what before, you know, from, from the time we introduce it and we adopt it, it would be useful to have a for a lack of a better way to characterize it, an operational plan from our composting contractor, on how that would actually work in practice. What collection procedure would be, where, where it would be located, adjacent to the pool. All those pieces might be worth thinking ahead of time, uh, before it's fully adopted. But at the highest level, you know, we'll be in favor of making it happen.
All right.
Yeah, we, we talked a lot about this at the pool committee.
Okay.
And um, it, it is so much gray, you know, the, the, where, where the cans go, where, where all the other cans go, just like you all have at home. And if you think about it, I don't know about anybody here, but my trash is so much smaller, because I compost so much. So I think that happens, once it got rolling and understood, it would, it, it would be similar.
It's a net positive.
It's a net positive. The thing that the pool committee kept saying, we don't want us to fall on the lifeguards. And I'm like, wait a second. What do the lifeguards do in terms of the trash? Are they in charge of trash? Then they would be in charge of composting.
Well, if the lifeguards are of the new generation, they would be delighted to be engaged in composting services.
Right, I mean, the, the, the last item here is an education campaign is needed, and that's where the composting contractor also can help.
I think we need an operational plan
Right.
on who does what, where does it get collected, how does it get shipped out to the front, you know, like all those pieces should be talked about.
Just like the other trash, whatever, however we handle the other trash, we're just having another bin.
But I, in my little household, I needed an operational plan to get everyone on board.
I think it's great, we gotta teach them, we, we have to do education, we gotta get people on board that eat down there all the time. I don't think this is so difficult.
It's not difficult, but it would be, given the scale of it, it would be good to have a plan.
There'll be some hiccups.
Yeah.
Well, do we give it, do we give it to the environment committee to come up with a plan, or the pool committee to come up with a plan?
No, not the pool committee.
Well, the, I, if you're asking, I would recommend the environmental committee with our composting contractor, and then I would run invite them.
I'd let them know, but I, I don't think that they.
They won't be able to come up with it, but they can weigh in on, on.
They should know what it is. Okay, I'm happy to share that.
So we go back to the, so the message is go back to the environment committee um, with the message that, yes, we very much like the idea, but what we need is an operational plan to put it into effect. And by all means, work with the compost, composting contractor, compost company.
Compost company, do they have big enough bins? They can't give us.
All of these pieces are, and, and they, and, you know.
I mean, they have businesses that, that, that compost, so I'm sure they got big bins.
I, I am also in favor of it. I think that the key thing is to get the environment committee to put some thought into it, as you say. Because we've had now, in the last couple of months, at least twice, emails from the compost crew uh, concerned about contamination or whatever.
That's the education campaign is important.
Pool fails, the entire town fails, because it's all gonna go into one bin, and so, I mean, I, so I think one of the things I would ask the environment committee and compost crew is. And so I mean, I, so I think one of the things I would ask the Environment Committee and compost crew is, at least for a trial period. Have a separate collection thing in their truck so that we know that this is working. Because if it all goes in the back of that truck and ends up in their whatever facility and they don't know where it came from.
My my block got yelled at. Everybody, we, somebody, somebody, it wasn't me, but I felt like, oh, my God, they're yelling at me. You know, contaminated.
Yes, yes.
And so they know, they know.
Just to clarify contamination here.
So they knew it came from.
It came from Ballstone Avenue.
Okay.
Someone put in tomato paste can.
Yeah, whatever, but.
Anyway, I think the key is to make sure that the Environment Committee and compost crew give some thought to the fact that the volume. From the pool is going to be so significant that if fail at the pool, you know, it could jeopardize.
I would add not to get ahead of ourselves, that there is like a trial period and the phase of it, and we have to just do it hotfully. Once we get there, it will be very good.
The Environment Committee.
Do it. Yep. So, all right. So Rohit, you're the liaison. Are you?
The Environment Committee, am I?
Yeah, you are.
You are?
We're waiting for a reason.
Yeah. Who is the chair of the environment?
David, David face that is.
Yes, okay.
David.
So I I I need to follow up with it? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's it.
Have fun.
He's excited to do that.
No, he's he's, he'll, he'll take it on. It's okay. He'll do it. All right. So I think we put a resolution on resolution there. So the next one is the potential food truck policy. EJ, do you want to explain that?
Yep. So as you all know, the code requires that a, any food truck operating in the town of Somerset requires a permit. However, until now, there actually has not been any sort of permit or permit application approved by the council. So basically, this would actually create one. And it covers just the basics of what would, what is required for a permit application. The conditions for approval or denial of a food truck permit. And then the conditions of the permit. So it's pretty simple like that, but happy to answer any questions.
All right. So have people had a chance to review this? Yes. All right, Teddy.
Okay. Excuse me. A couple of questions are, I'll start with the, what I think would be the more easy one, and that is. Where these food trucks are going to park? Can they go over the bridge? If they go over the bridge to the pool house, where are they going? Are they going in the side of the pool house? They need a clear direction. Can't park in the handicap spots. They've done that already. Then they park under instead the the basketball hoop. Should they park where the, the other side of the bridge? Where the flower pots are and they, we, the flower pots get moved for the evening and the truck goes there. So we do need a clear, a clear guide as to where the trucks park, number one. My other thing was, I want to talk about fees, but we can wait and you want to discuss the, where it's going to park first and then I can bring up my my fee question.
Yep. So for this, this full season, because of the bridge, we're asking them to not park on the other side of the bridge. And we are telling them to park where the pots are.
And they can move the pots themselves.
Slight tendency, the bridge might collapse under them, which we don't want.
No, I think that's, I think, and I think where the pots are is a great idea. They're just, having moved them myself once, they're very heavy. You know. But anyway, so that's great. And then if we're going to stipulate that, great.
I mean, the only thing that I would say about like the food truck being near the, where the pots are is that, you know, the, I mean. In these instances, there are so many kids that are like going in and out and like they're unsupervised and they're just carrying their parents' money and. You know, they're really, you know, we have already a parking, you know, we're we're concerned about the parking lot safety to begin with.
We have a, we have a walkway.
Yeah, but people come in and out of that.
People crowd around a food truck.
Yeah, and wait for the food.
Events, like swim team, whatever, it's often kids that crowd around there. On on their own, because it's the truck normally is right outside the pool, you know, space. So it will hundred percent be a public safety issue, because if it's by the pots, it will be at the entrance. And that's going to be it. And we have, for the swim team events, at least there are parking coordinators. But that'll be too much for them if there are kids all around. It'll be, it'll it'll break down very quickly.
Do we buy food trucks there during the swim meet?
Yeah.
Okay, there are food trucks when when we host, which is not a lot. We are barely hosted.
Beanie, beanie is at nine.
There will be three more hosted events by the swim team this season. And it's likely to be a.
Can I, can I, can I suggest this is a problem really only for this season because the bridge is going to be repaired and then it can go the other side of the bridge?
No, no, this is also a legitimate concern. I was just saying that we have to, we don't have a clear answer. The, at least putting it in the where the pots are will be a, will be a problem.
I mean.
But I don't know what the alternative is, you know, because the pool, I am, as you know, very concerned about the bridge as well.
I think, I mean, I think that the only other place that I can think that would be probably safe. I he doesn't risk the bridge and doesn't risk the kids is to actually have it parked. At this end of the bridge, literally in front of the bridge. Because no cars are allowed to cross the bridge anyway. Handicap vehicles, maybe the food truck will have to move for a handicap vehicle.
You needed an ambulance?
The food truck will have to move. How how mobile are these food trucks?
Not once they operate, once they're serving, yeah, they.
Because they put their tanks out.
It becomes.
I would like to say that if this is our concern, there are two ways to handle this. One is no food trucks during the swim meet because we have too many kids. We really, it's one thing on Saturday night or Friday night.
I can tell you that's a reasonable thought, but it would be practically impossible to implement it this season.
Okay.
Because these things are planned months in advance.
Then I have another idea.
All right.
I don't, I, we close off the parking lot. As you come in, you know, we keep our, we'd only have a few spaces.
Yeah.
And we have our handicap spaces. If you close off the parking lot to the left, people are going to have to go into the neighborhood and park. Most of us live here. And just use that part. Put the food truck there. There's no traffic. There's a walkway coming out of the pool.
They can park at the far end of the parking lot at the entrance to Ginton Park.
Can I, can I pull the discussion?
Yeah, well.
Yeah, to say, the the resolution is about have formalizing a.
I'm sorry.
A gen- a a an ordinance governing food trucks in Somerset.
Yes.
Well, not in ordinance. Where to park at the pool, okay? It really isn't.
It it's a resolution to establish a food truck policy.
Right. Yes, yes.
Okay.
And so that's. And 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 by all means, let the lawyer speak. What I'm trying to say is we're not trying to decide here where the. Food trucks should park at the pool. Okay?
Right. The town code currently provides. So this, this, this policy would provide interpretive guidance, administrative procedures to implement the code. Right now, the code says a food truck may only be parked at times and locations approved by the mayor.
All right.
All right.
So that's, that's what it does. And I I I'm happy with it as it's written myself. I think separately, we need to work out where the food trucks are going to park this summer. That's real.
On this, I had just two thoughts. Do we need to say any other documentation as requested by the town manager? What could that conceal be? Let's define it now. And then lastly, it says, no amplified, no, where is it? No amplified music or generators that disturb nearby homes are permitted. I wonder, I don't know what Ron's advice is, to just sort of say, subject to county noise.
Just no music coming out of a food truck?
No, noise, no, no, like, subject to county noise rules or whatever it is. What are the established rules? Instead of something that is vague and hard for us to determine?
I don't think it's hard to say no music coming out of the food trucks. And and it's, and if you think about it, no matter where you put that food truck, music could could bother up its neighbors on Warwick. And.
I'm just thinking, is there any music ever coming out?
Well, I don't stop one.
Yeah.
No, I I I think the way it's written, that is absolutely fine. No amplified, no amplified music should be allowed.
Right. I agree.
No, no, I think this is, no, no, I'm not saying we shouldn't, I'm in favor of that. I was just wondering if it should say that it should be subject to the county noise rule, so whatever noise ordinance, to be clear.
No, amplified music is pretty, pretty clear and.
Right. Okay, fine.
I have.
But one, one.
No, that was it.
One, one point I had on it, it doesn't, it says, this is all relevant to Somerset streets generally. It doesn't say particularly the pool. I I assume food trucks were only going to go to the pool, but it could, in theory, they could go anywhere in town according to this ordinance. Is that right?
Well, yeah, that's other, the code right now, how it's written, is not specified by just the pool.
All right.
The policy is built around what the code.
So do we want to modify it so that it's only going to be at the pool or do we say just all the streets and that's it?
It's all.
No, I think it should be townwide, townwide. Yeah, because we do for food truck here for July as well.
Okay.
People have private parties.
But you have to put them in their driveway. You can't put, if I want to have a party, I can't put it in front of my house. I gotta put it in my driveway.
Yes.
Ideally, yes.
Yeah.
You know, I have, I have a couple of points as well. Just, one is, funnily, since we discussed it earlier. This talk about the two, the conditions of permit where it says operator must provide adequate trash and recycling receptacles. But no composting.
Well, that's not.
Well, yeah, I I think.
And if it's going to be at the pool and you have composting there, why would you not have composting at food truck?
Because they're in charge of their own food. They're in charge of their own garbage, that's why.
Also, I'm going to put out that wrong first thing I stand. I don't know.
Yes. All right.
I think, but before we go there, Rohit, add another.
Yeah, and another point, which is actually is it's it's addressed to Ron, which is, if I read the code correctly. This, the the food truck policy does not apply to ice cream trucks and to.
Right.
Clayboys, shaved ice, et cetera. Is that correct?
Yes, because they're roaming.
Yeah, the definition of food truck excludes coffee, frozen dessert, or ice cream trucks.
Okay. So the reason I, the reason I raise this is because. No, I'm sorry, but what if an ice cream truck or Clayboys does sit around for more than fifteen minutes at a particular location? Which, by the way, Clayboys does in front of the school every afternoon.
Oh. Yeah, then if it, if it's there more than fifteen minutes, then it is a food truck.
So can I just suggest, irregard, not related to this, maybe could, I don't know, EJ, whether you and Wayne can have a conversation about telling Clayboys. At fourteen minutes and fifty-nine seconds, time's up. They can't sit there. That's what they do. They sit there every afternoon. By the way, it's a very hazardous location.
Or they could get a permit.
Or they need to get a permit. But but either way, they're parked in a very dangerous place. We we heard from the PTA about this and I actually saw it the other day. So I went to see exactly where they are. It's a very dangerous location. You really shouldn't be parked there. It's dangerous for the kids. It's dangerous for cars turning from Warwick onto Cumberland. He just basically plucks himself right at the corner in front of the school. And that's just not safe. So we need, we need to have, that's just, it's just as an aside.
I I think that the council needs to address this issue through possible regulation. And what does the town attorney recommend?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think that's right. There's a broader policy discussion.
Yeah.
Should probably take place before we, or before we're in a position to be able to to pin down the, the procedures precisely. And that relates to a couple of comments I had about the draft. I'll give those to you real quick to help the discussions. So right now, under the code, code says it's unlawful to operate a food truck without a permit, period. Doesn't give us any criteria. One unintended consequence that I see might happen from this procedure document is that this document says. We need a reason to deny. And the food truck operator then has the right of appeal if they are denied. I'm not sure we want to grant those rights. In other words, we shouldn't have to have a reason perhaps to deny, and maybe we don't want to hear appeals. But as the mayor noted, this relates more to, I think, a broader policy discussion about. How do we actually envision these things operating in the town? Maybe if you start with pinning that down, then you can develop the procedures as a result of that decision. And just a minor thing, right now, the code says the mayor has to approve these permits. This procedure would say the manager does it. If the manager's not available, then the mayor's authorized. I mean, I think in practice, that's fine, but we should probably decide if we need to con- conform.
Yeah. A- another thing is that for the council to consider is a limit on the number of trucks.
Yeah, good point.
And and who makes the selection, you know, who, who makes the selection of which trucks are going to be allowed at certain events? All all these kind of things. This, this all needs to be regulated because, you know, food trucks have gotten increasingly popular. And we don't want to create a situation where that, that there are numerous food trucks coming in and applying for per- for permits, you know? You know, look what's happened in certain, like, you know, there was in Friendship Heights on Wisconsin Avenue, remember several years ago? At lunchtime, the food trucks would all go park in those parking spaces and keep putting in, keep feeding the meter. So we don't, we don't want, remember before, before a few years ago, we banned food trucks in the town. But I, but I, but due to popular demand, we now allow, you know, in a limited way, food trucks. But 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 now, we want to make sure that the, that our quality of life is protected. So I think we should continue to, I think we should move forward with this, but then continue the discussion of future work sessions. Because I think everybody has some good, everybody has good ideas about this.
Maybe a little subcommittee to come up with a list and bring it to the, bring it to a work session and go over.
All right. So we will continue the discussion of this at a future work session. Subcommittee are difficult on council. I can go into details why.
Okay.
And a number of ideas have been expressed. We can catch them. They certainly are. Should we limit the number of food trucks is is one issue. What do we do with a food truck not at the pool when they go beyond fifteen minutes? Should we write our policy so that it is a clear permit? The things they have to do satellite permit, we don't give reasons for denying a permit so that we don't get into. Unappeal situation. All those things are floating. I miss that one, you know?
And specifying exactly what documents we need.
All that.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to say one thing is that I, I. I'm not sure that I want to get into a policy discussion on how many food trucks, because I'm going to trust. The town manager not to be handing out permits by the dozen. That that's, this we manage through the good judgment of 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 our town government. The question on the fifteen minutes thing is that, just to clarify, the issue for me is that. Ice cream trucks are not covered by the food truck policy at all. And but there's a fifteen, but the question is, if they cross into the fifteen minute mark, do they, do they then fall under this policy? That's what I'd like to clarify.
Well, it should be written that way, so we do, yeah, right. All right. Any other points that you want as we go forward? We'll bring this to the next work session, which will be in July.
We'll talk about that fees the next time.
Uh, you want the fees for the food trucks? Do you want to bring that up now? Go.
Go ahead. I I think.
It's on the next agenda, I think. These should.
No, these are not high end. I hate to give, I hate to make them pick up permit that, that isn't anything but very cheap. And the deposit, I think it's tough. These are really, you know, hardworking, general people that don't have a lot of money and. I don't know that I would, I would put fees on them. I'm maybe disagree, I'm openly disagree.
So are we discussing the fee schedule or?
No, this is just a fee for food trucks.
Or whether we should have a fee at all?
That's a question for me as well.
Yeah, I agree.
Now, it's one thing to make them sign up, get a permit.
Yeah.
To be accountable. And but to charge them a fee, I don't know. I think that.
It's a benefit for the residents of the town. It's nice. It's fun. It's, you know.
I would ask for a deposit.
Community. I don't know. Even that.
I'm open to not asking, but I would ask for a deposit.
I don't think I would do that either. You know, if they become a problem, that's a different story. I don't know that they've been a problem.
Well.
The biggest problem is you can't get the food.
If they leave, if, if, the reason for a deposit is if they leave a mess, who's going to clear it up? Okay, they don't get the deposit back if they leave a mess. That's the way it works.
No, but I didn't do that at this point. I don't. No, but I didn't do that at least point, I don't think at least the last two summers that we've had them.
Right, I don't think it's been a problem.
And I think Shannon's right, it turns out even when we do it for the swim team events, the town shows up. Use the food truck, so it's, it is a nice thing that we do.
It's a nice neighborhood.
Exactly.
And I am a girl who loves a deposit, so this is pretty good for me, okay?
All right, so a deposit, but no fee, okay. Um this will be continued at the next work session with some of these ideas incorporated by then. Okay, so the next one is an old favorite of ours, which is discussing the fee schedule and um.
I didn't hear this one.
So um. Who wants to start it? Debbie, you said you were ready for it?
I'm ready, yeah. When I looked at the fee schedule, and then when I looked at that wonderful list that 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 I guess you were just putting together on. What it costs us to do, to um to do these permits, one thing landed me, new bills. They cost us so much money, and their fees are so little. I would like to see that fee really raised, be more commensurate with what new bills have been costing us. Um and uh so tha- that's, that's my big thing. As to our renovations, I wonder if we can't do a fee that has to do with the size of the renovation. You know, a small one, whatever, wherever it was, I don't have it in front of me, can't find it on my thing here. Um but, you know, and so, but I'd like to really take the new bills and make it a really large fee for permitting. What it costs us is what they should be paying. When you guys say, we have a.
You know, the fee is five thousand at the moment.
I feel like I'm having deja, did we discuss?
Yeah, we did, I I mean.
What did we?
We do have this, like, well, this is for stormwater, uh but when I, when you look, take, we we can compare this to the list of what it costs us.
But it, what what it cost us was highly variable, I saw.
Yeah, but the new bills were all really high, you know, they were consistently really high, you know, um.
I have to look that up.
That list. Where would that be on here, wait a second? Um. You know, it, you know, something that he's scheduled. Cost analysis, here we are. So.
Councilor Haller, you brought up a lot of good points, I think it'd be good if um the town attorney again addressed them to refresh people's memory.
Here's, so one, here's an example, there's one new bill that costs us thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars.
It's very special.
Well, they weren't all like that.
So it's been outlined.
Which one's the thirteen thousand?
Let's have the town attorney address this.
Thirteen thousand.
These are good, these are good concerns, let's have the town attorney again school us on this issue.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor, so you're happy to answer any specific questions you have, generally speaking, permit fees. Are meant to help offset the cost of implementing the building permit program. Case law tells us, we can't impose fees as taxes, fees need to be. Related to the program that we're implementing. As a practical matter, the most small municipalities that rely on outside consultants. Cannot expect to recover one hundred percent of their costs, and there's a general recognition that. There is a cost to do business, there is a cost to require permits, and we can't expect to recover one hundred percent, but. We do have the ability, under case law, to impose fees that bear a relationship to the cost that particular permit. Requires, and so it is the difficult question for the council to arrive at, what's a reasonable amount? To impose based on cost of the town and what you want your residents to have to incur. Um is that what you had in mind, Mr. Mayor, that that?
Yes, that's good.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then I I would say, when you look at the examples, one thing to keep in mind is. You you've got your, your ordinary permit application, which hopefully doesn't require a lot of consultant time when things are rather straightforward, and it's just a review of plans. But then, as we've experienced, there's a few cases where things get controversial, we have. Contested hearings, appeals, petitions for judicial review, etc.
Right, so.
Yeah.
Costs are highly variable, is what you're saying.
Yes.
But if you take the average outside of the thirteen K, it comes below forty-five hundred.
Which one is thirteen?
So the thirteen K, um there was a mistype, the nineteen K is actually thirteen K.
Okay.
So that was updated online.
I wonder what residents would think, if they knew what it costs every time there was a building project going on. And how they feel about what what they, that they're paying for, you know, on this.
Maintain the quality of life that we all share.
Yeah, for it.
No, no, I think you're, I'm just saying, where do you wanna anchor what that cost is? And I'm just saying, I wouldn't anchor it in the thirteen thousand, that seems extraordinary. If you anchor it in the average of the others, that's less than forty-five hundred.
And we're, it's actually at five thousand, which is a bit more than forty-five hundred, so.
So we, i- if you wanted to anchor it, that we are effectively addressing what what you're saying, that's how I would look at it, because of. You know, because if if I chose to anchor it in the two, three thousand dollar amounts, that would be too low. Um so, you know, we need to anchor it in an average for what they've given us, which seems to be below forty-five hundred.
And I think, I think that uh, we're not sure how you calculate it, but if I understand correctly, when you say your average, you're taking that total bottom line number, right?
Yes.
But actually, you should subtract the stormwater management review number from that.
I agree.
There's already a separate fee for it.
So it's even lower, it's even lower.
I mean, I think, I think, I think this, to me, uh taking the averages, actually, I think the new home number is fine. Ironically, I think the stormwater management number is low, but if you look at the averages for that, actually, there is well over twelve hundred.
Yeah.
And 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 this actually tells you something, that in fact, the biggest challenge this town has right now is the impact of. Large additions or new homes on our stormwater system. And so I think, uh I'm actually fine uh with the the new home fees. I do think that the new construction stormwater fee should be raised, it should be, I think, two thousand dollars, looking at this number here. Um and uh the only other thing I would say is that because the size, the square footage of the. Additions is not given in the, in this sample, I'm not exactly sure whether the the two hundred and fifty dollars. Plus one dollar per square foot above two hundred, whether that aligns or not. Um but that said, I just wanna say to to uh EJ and Justin, this cost analysis, because I think we had asked for this, it's really good, it's a very good. Very good effort, and I think it's, it is exactly what I had hoped that we would get. Um so I really wanna thank you both for 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 doing a really good job, I know it's difficult to get this data, and there's a lot of caveats and so on and so forth. It's 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 exactly what we needed to make an informed decision. Um the only thing, as I said, like, I couldn't figure out the square footage, so I'm not exactly sure. Whether that number is right or wrong, but the new home number is fine with me, stormwater number, I think, is, or new additions is too low for me. I think the variance number is also, a thousand is also fine with me.
One, one thing, if I can respond to that, uh these, on the stormwater, I understood we are trying to also reduce our costs.
Yeah.
That's why I didn't wanna calibrate against these just yet, do we have a updated view on that?
Yes, it's um as of right now, it looks like um Steve uh Cerdo, for the mature, uh can. Uh it looks like we will only, we'll need to rely on Bayland if it is a. Complicated system, so for new builds, we still might need Bayland, but for all the other smaller projects, we won't need Bayland.
So does that mean our building, uh there's a line for building and installing that, no?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, the building permit admin cost will go up, or is it inclusive? It's largely inclusive.
It's hard. Yeah, I mean, really.
Because it's by time.
Yeah.
Okay.
So translating that into what we've got here, is that we've got three levels of fees for uh impervious surface added. If you're adding less than four hundred, then it's two fifty, um four hundred or greater, it's five hundred, new construction is twelve hundred, so there's a big leap up for new construction, that is when Bayland gets involved.
That is, and that's why I think, but I think that number is still too low.
And again, like, I mean, what EJ just said totally supports that, because he said that we're gonna need to bring in Bayland for new construction.
His number three will almost certainly be Bayland.
Yeah.
And twelve hundred is too low, if you look at those numbers, it's gonna be complex. I think one and two, if Steve does it, we're fine.
You proposed two thousand.
I mean, just eyeballing these numbers, I would say.
Let's do a real average of it, you know?
I can't remember, um I think it was me that that probably said this, but. Why do we say the variance was higher? We were just trying to make people not have variances, is that?
Yeah, uh oh, we wanna discourage variances, since variances are inherently against the town code, and so it's. Variance is supposed to be, if there's an actual hardship, it's not supposed to be, I want this, so I want it, please, it's supposed to be. I need an exception because of how the law is shaped or.
But then, like, I guess, like, so if it really is like a true hardship. Uh you know, like, those people, I'm just thinking those people that came in, um who were doing a renovation, and they needed all those variances because their house already. Um was set up that, like, it didn't fall, like, have any setbacks, it was that house on Cumberland. Um like on the top of Cumberland, um I I can't remember what it was, but like, they basically um. Had to get a variance for everything they did, because the house that was already there broke all of those rules. So in those circumstances, it seems weird to pay a thousand dollars to, you know what I mean? I don't know if there's any way around that, like, if it's really truly a true, like, you know, I mean.
They could request, they could request a fee reduction.
Variance to the variance fee reduction.
That's what I'm hoping for.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, um and then, like, in that case, too, it is a thousand per application, so even though they had, like, six variances, I believe it was.
Right.
And they played, paid a thousand.
Yeah, yeah, okay, we're requesting B for the B O K.
All right, several of you want to raise the new construction stormwater fee to two thousand, I heard. The attorney is twitching.
Sorry, Ron, yes. I took my hand down, uh just just to reiterate what we talked about last time, ultimately, we we can't. Impose fees to discourage conduct, the fees just need to be set to offset implementation of the program. In other words, you can't charge a large variance fee in order to discourage variances.
All right, thank you.
The average supports the two thousand uh storm post.
How Sir Haller said it, that you can do it, but you can't say it.
Well, I hope this meeting's not being recorded, which it is being recorded.
It is being recorded, so we need to strike everything at the next meeting.
Um okay, so uh are we all okay with a two thousand fee on new construction, and that doesn't cover all of the costs of? The Bayland review, but it covers a lot of it.
Yes.
Yes.
Wait, just to clarify, two thousand for what?
New construction.
Uh which refers to the.
Stormwater.
Stormwater and new construction, sorry, the level three.
Level three, yes, that's where it is, so, okay, so we're recommending two thousand, we are, we are saying two thousand. All right, any other fees that you have?
The rest are done, is that we?
Uh well, is is there, I mean, there's two pages off, and that's, that's the building fees, and then there are the recreation fees separately.
Yeah, very good.
We can talk a lot about these things very.
Yes.
What what we said for the food truck was uh no fee and the two fifty deposit.
The place over, I did add your check fee, but after hearing your discussion, I can.
Okay, all right, but we still need the two fifty deposit, though, that is.
No.
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 Yes.
No, we have not decided that.
What, didn't we decide that at all?
We decided that.
You summarized it that way, but you didn't decide.
But we didn't agree. I I mean, if, if.
We didn't wanna hurt your feelings.
Well, let let me go over it quickly, I just, just, who is, who is gonna do the cleanup if they make a mess?
So.
Who does the cleanup, I don't know who does it.
So I think that I would recommend that we do, that we put this on the table for future discussion, because, for example. We do charge a sec- a a deposit, a a security deposit at the town hall. And so, and so let's think about why it's not appropriate to put a deposit on a, on a vendor that could create a mess. So, but let's think about it, I don't think we need to decide tonight.
Okay.
But it it does make, I think it makes a lot of sense. The, and 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 by the way, when, when Councilor Haller, when you made the comment about. A a lot of these food truck operators are highly successful and and doing quite well, so I I wouldn't say, oh, poor food truck operator. It's a very expensive thing, and 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 I think a lot of them do very well.
I'm such a bleeding heart.
Well, some of them also have restaurants and are running a food truck on the side, I mean.
Right.
We're at the full range, I think, but like, for example, we invited someone who was an X D department. Person who's let go, and he's, you know, probably leveraged to create this side hustle, so.
Anyway, I think, I think, I think, you know, scratching the fee and having a deposit is a good compromise. Uh between bleeding heart and hard nose.
All right.
Well, it could also be a deposit, uh, la vie on the sponsor who was inviting the food truck, be another way to.
I think it has to be the food truck.
Well.
It has to be the food, okay.
Right. Okay, all right, well, anyway, as as Jeffrey said, we can continue that discussion, it's. But, all right, the next one is slightly more complicated.
So sorry, just to come back on on the, on the feature, I have to add two questions, one is, um. So just to ask, uh, uh, with the process, is there, is there a, a, an endpoint, or does it not matter when we adopt this feature to, uh? We can continue this discussion, continue on into the new fiscal year, and September, October, November, I mean, when do we have to actually adopt this?
The attorney can also answer, but I, the council can change it whenever they would like the resolution.
Were there two, two questions, this particular set of changes, when do they get formalized?
Um and how? If the council believes that they're ready to go, I can put them on the agenda for the July meeting.
When we introduce them, and then we finalize, okay, and then I think additionally, your question is, we can change them anytime.
Yeah, but but this, these changes are not tied to, like, new fiscal year, I mean.
Right, I mean, I, I. Maybe I'm reading the room wrong, but I sort of feel that we can take this to the July council, and. See if we can bring some closure, I think, I mean. This is my, this is my third work session, and some of these things seem to come back again and again, I sort of like to open it up for other items.
We didn't control that, did I misunderstand?
No, I, well, I, well, I.
Well, if three, if three of you, remember, everybody, if three of you. Remember, if three of you wanna put it on the agenda, it's on the agenda.
But no, but Robin, did you want further discussion, or can?
Well, I mean, the only thing is that I I believe with Jeffrey, uh that we should have a deposit on food trucks because of the fact that they could make a mess, and. The deposit is our way of.
But we can, but we can take this decision at the council meeting, I mean, I think that.
Right.
My own view is that, uh you know, if if there is, if there is just, you know, one or two. Not, not core issues that are still up in the air, let's use the next couple of weeks to. Stew over it, think about it, and we'll take our final decision on the second of July, or whatever.
So, so the the entire fee schedule doesn't have to be, you can put individual changes. If three of you want to put any individual changes on the July for introduction. You're, you're, you're welcome to do that, that's the process, you know, it doesn't have to be the whole schedule that's on there. You can pick and choose, if three of you wanna put it on to be introduced.
Well, I, I, I propose that we put all the proposed changes. For the construction and for the recreational activity for adoption at the July council.
Well, it's not adoption, it's for introduction, introduction, right?
That's right.
Yes.
I'm al- I'm also fine with that, and I'm also fine with us subsequently figuring out the food truck thing, which we can add later on, which is, I think, we're.
I think it's okay, if you feel strongly about a food deposit for the truck, that's fine.
Yeah, we can figure that out when we're introducing it.
Okay, we can do that in July, all right, okay, so.
So there's, so one more thing, I wanted to just, uh. Um. While not wanting to hold this up for discussion in July, I do, I do want to bring up one uh issue that I know that. Uh some residents keep bringing up, and this is this question about. Um, guest fees at the pool for. Family members who are not, I guess, residents in the town, grandchildren and so on. Um, can I, I don't think we need to take a decision, but I I do think that, and I wanted to ask. Can we refer this matter to the pool committee? To think it through and say, no, you don't want to.
No, no, it's, it's, I thought, I thought one of the things we were trying to do. Is to not give those kinds of things to the full committee, that they were, work on the pool. You know, and the environment and, and the fees really ha, I think should come from us.
Do you have an idea on this part?
Well, I mean, I think that, uh, there's. There are ways in which if we decide to go down, we would have to implement it, for example. We could ask residents to register with the town hall. Family members that are non-resident children and grandchildren. And that way they're on the list, and when they come to the pool, they're considered. Either for discounted fee or no fee, to be discussed, but I think that there is a, there is some sort of a mechanism that. We should try to brainstorm around. If it doesn't work, at the end of the day, we think this is not implementable, then we go back to residents and say, we couldn't come up with a system. But I think we should at least try. To see if there is some mechanism by which we can do it. Um, I think it's, it's, I mean, going back to the whole thing with a food truck and a community thing, I mean. You know, we are talking about, in some cases here. Adult children who grew up in Somerset. And their children, and I sort of feel that, you know, why, why charge for those, um?
This, this is, this really isn't on the agenda for this meeting.
No, I know, so. So why don't you put this on the agenda for the next work session?
We can do that.
And then start resolving that, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Conversation that needs to go back and forth, they need to ping pong it.
It it does need to be, it does need to be a conversation.
So if you could have it at the next work session, that'd be great.
I, I think, I, I think that's a good, I think it's a good idea to have a continuing discussion. About this issue at the July work session, especially because there's a lot of information about the legalities. That the town attorney can insert, can can convey to us. But I, but I do think that Councilmember Khan is right, that it is something that should be discussed.
Have they discussed?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, it would be great, I think, to get all the information.
I think you need a lot, leave a lot of time for that conversations, everything is a lot, no, I think it's a lot to think about.
Yeah.
There, there are a number of issues.
It seems simple, but maybe it's not, I do, I do wanna hear from Ron, you know, what he thinks.
Yeah, there's, there's legalities involved here, but it's, it is a very timely issue.
Yeah, very good.
All right, um, so we'll move on to item eight, which is discussion on the supporting the Chevy Chase municipalities in opposition to the Montgomery County Public Schools rezoning plan. Uh, so, uh, the. Schools are, the, the, the school board has come up with. Draft rezoning plan, and that's available on the website. And they also have described their criteria in creating these zones. And it is now a time for public comment on them. The schools involved are middle schools and high schools, not elementary schools at the moment, so it doesn't involve Somerset Elementary right now. Um, that's the state of it, and, uh.
Some. When, when you're done, when you're done, Mr. President, I'll add, I'll add some things.
Go, go ahead, that, that's all I'm saying at the moment.
So, so, uh, to, to elaborate on what our president is saying, so the, there's a boundary. The, there's a, there's a boundary issue that, um. The Board of Education is, um, discussing, and there, there are four separate plans that have been introduced. And plan number three would, um. Okay, the, the four, the three of the four plans, the, um. The children from the town of Chevy Chase would go to B C C. Plan number three, the children from the town of Chevy Chase would go to Montgomery Blair. And the town of Chevy Chase is going to be formulating a, a position. And I recommend that we, which I think is probably gonna be, because I think. Wasn't the letter sent to you, or did the town manager convey the information? What the town of Chevy Chase can, in any case, um, I would recommend that the, that our council. Adopt whatever position the town of Chevy Chase takes on this matter.
But just to be clear. It, but just to be clear, like, all four options for Somerset Elementary. And everyone that goes to Somerset Elementary are the same, and so they go to Somerset, Westland, B C C, like, nothing.
Right.
This is only for middle schools and for high schools.
But what I'm seeing, though, that our residents, there's no change for our.
Oh, you mean for our residents in the middle?
No, there's no, no, none of the plan, none of the plans change, I mean, no, none of the.
I would be opposed to this.
Because, he's just saying town of Chevy Chase is taking a stance because they really don't wanna go from B C C to Blair. But our residents are all not affected, yeah, not affected.
Right, that's, that's all correct.
We should support the town of Chevy Chase on this.
It's just, it's just whether you wanna decide to support, because remember, um. The, if the kids from the town of Chevy Chase went to Montgomery Blair, that could affect. Some of the kids in our town that want to go to school with kids from the town of Chevy Chase, that's the issue. I don't have, I don't have a position on it, I just suggest that we support the, uh, the town of Chevy Chase. But the other thing I'll say is, the rumor out there is that plan number three has very little likelihood of being adopted. So I'm just providing you with this information, and it's up to you to decide what you wanna do.
So, w, w, number three is Chevy Chase goes to Blair. The, my question would be, who comes to B C C then?
Well, well, you can, you can see the, you can see the best, you can. The town manager can circulate the, the best, the different, uh, boundary, uh, plans.
Yeah, I think it could be good if we could, if that could be shared with everybody, if the letter, if town Chevy Chase's letter could be shared with us as well.
I think, I think plans on the board's website, are they, aren't they, E J?
Yeah.
Just show the website.
Thank you.
And if you could see the letter as well from town of Chevy Chase, um.
Okay.
I don't, did they, I don't think they've ta, did they take a. Uh, maybe they're taking a position on Wednesday, don't they, Mr. Town Attorney, don't they meet on Wednesday?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's right, I checked their agenda right now.
So, so really, the, 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 I don't think really time is of the essence on this, because I don't think the board is about to make a decision. So, so maybe the point tonight was just to let you know what was going on and to further study the issue.
Yeah, I mean, it would be useful to hear from Westland B C C parents in Somerset, what their views are, um. I don't know, I mean, you, you asked this question of where, you know, if students are moving from B C C to Blair. Does that mean a reduction in the number of students at B C C? Um, well, that's not necessarily a bad thing, man, I mean, I would like to hear from the parents themselves here.
I think that it's, um, there's like, there's one situation where. A group of kids from Pyle Whitman moves to B C C.
In, in option three?
Moves, yeah, I think it moves to Western B C C. So instead, it's like those Bradley Hills Elementary kids.
Yeah.
Come here, and then the town of Chevy Chase goes there, I, I believe is how it. Works, but yes, there's so many nuances to it, because there's four plans, and. I mean, unfortunately, I probably shouldn't say this out loud, but unfortunately, you know, we really went. Up against it with this whole Somerset rezoning, and they have made their decision pretty, you know, I think they know what they want, but, um. What option, but, um.
That could not help us, you know, that, that.
I, I think, I think that it's important that we do communicate, I think many of the parents in our. Town of, of, uh, uh, the, the public school parents might not be aware of all. Of these plans, and definitely we wanna consult with them before you might take a position.
Can someone write an article in the town journal about it? Who knows enough to write something?
But we, we.
John Barry?
We, we can, we, we can make that, we can make that happen.
All right.
We can.
John's do it, he's good, John's very good at this stuff.
We'll make that happen, thanks for the suggestion.
Thank you.
But, but continue to reach out to your, um, constituents to solicit their opinions. And inform them.
And I don't know if, like, you know, before, like, the Somerset P T A formed an opinion. I, I don't know if, if that would happen again for this situation, because not, you know. No one, or well-known, yes, yeah.
Well, well, this, I think that, I think that's a great idea, and, um, E J can reach out to the Somerset P T A. Somerset, I think maybe reach out to all the P T As.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so we, uh, have a feeling for what we're gonna do on that, good, um, and I'll, let's bring in Rohit's, um. Item now, uh, since we're running ahead of time, which is good, um, so. Rohit, do you wanna talk about that?
Yeah, um, we can do that, well, uh. And, as you, as you know, there is a proposal. There is a proposal before the county council to introduce a zoning text amendment that would allow for. Uh, multi-family, uh, housing on what they call corridors. Uh, and that is essentially Mass Avenue, River Road, Wisconsin, Connecticut, in our area here. Um, and, uh. Various, um, civic organizations, including the two that I mentioned. Um, have now written to the, uh, county council. Um, uh, asking for amendments to the, uh, to the Z T A. Um, and essentially, the concerns of, uh, of, of, of these groups. Um, which represent a very large cross-section of communities in Montgomery County, it's not just the Bethesda-Chelly Chase, uh, thing. Um, uh, that, uh, one is, there is a proposal that. It's not just lots that are facing the corridors that would be eligible. But even corner lots, where one side is on the corridor, but the actual address is an interior, uh, side street. Uh, should be added in, this is a proposal from the planning department that the, the. Uh, county committee, council committee would look at. Uh, there are concerns about parking, because there is a proposal to actually reduce the parking requirements. Uh, in these, uh, in these lots, um. There is, there are concerns about the fact that if a developer buys the lot facing the corridor. And then buys the neighboring lot inside the neighborhood. They could actually combine them, and thereby chaining, thereby actually extending, uh, over time. Uh, multi-family units into neighborhoods, um. Uh, there are concerns apropos our previous discussion about schools. What the impacts will be on, 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 on school populations, there are concerns about traffic. Uh, you know, water and electric utilities, stormwater, and so on and so forth. Um, what is interesting is that almost everything I've described actually. Is not in the original Z T A, the problem is that the planning department. Has introduced a whole host of recommended amendments. That actually make things. Dangerous or risky for neighborhoods, and so these letters are basically saying, reject all these amendments. Or introduce specific amendments that don't allow these things to happen, uh, because, uh, you know, we have this concern, but I'll let Debbie finish on that, yeah.
To this, is that, how, when, remember, we beat down the original proposal with A H S I, which would have affected all of us. So they came back with this corridor plan, and what, what this is, is another developer's dream. Because they, what will most likely happen is that there will be duplexes. Because if they build duplexes, they won't have to build, um, uh, low income, any kind of, uh, affordable housing.
No, no income housing.
Yeah, so where if they build a, you know, a triplex or or quadplex, they would have to have. Uh, a, a unit that was for, what this all set out to do was to get. Provide, provide for our nurses, our, our, our teachers, our fire people, you know, and so if they build less. Developers can get more, it would be just more market rate housing instead of what the original plan was. And I just wanna underscore the parking situation, there'll be no parking along any of these corridors. And they won't have to put enough parking on, on their lots, so it's all gonna stream into the neighborhoods. And I wanna tell you, this goes, uh, we think about ourselves, we just goes all the way to only. You know, we're not the only ones crying out here, and we really need to help support this. The support not passing this, and we have to put as much energy into this as we did with A H, at A H S I, even though. What's really gonna affect us mostly is just the parking, okay, humbly, forget it, they'll all come right in here, you know. Dorset where they can, you know, but it's really gonna come from here on, because it'll be the easiest marks in from any houses along Wisconsin. So let's think about not only ourselves, but our neighbors and how we can help them, and so we all need to go back and be vigilant about this.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I'll just conclude by saying that. But, uh, you know, as I said, these, these two letters are very well crafted, are very clear, and what they are not. Proposing is that the. That the county council not adopt. The zoning amendments, both letters say that although we have a lot of concerns. Um, we believe that you need to, uh, either reject these amendments or adopt certain other revisions. That would have safeguards for neighborhoods, uh, but neither letter is killing. The, the, the proposal that's on the table, so I think it's important to, to clarify that. Um, there are certainly many residents who would want the Z T A. Killed entirely, but that is not the position that these two organizations have taken. Uh, you know, they, 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 they're saying that these safeguards are important, and I think that, uh. Uh, for that reason, as, as Debbie says, I think, uh. The impact on our neighboring, our neighbors. The impacts on those of us who will have to drive on Wisconsin and Connecticut and River Road are not trivial. Um, especially when you consider that, uh, Westbarth has got four hundred plus new units. Friendship Heights at Geico will have five hundred new units. Um, and the, with, the sort of the restrictions in Bethesda were lifted. Quite significantly, so there's already. Quite a bit of stuff in the pipeline in this, in this area, uh, which can significantly, I mean, would add. Thousands of new units of housing, um, and, uh, and if we're going to have more, then if there should be these safeguards. Uh, which, which I think are very reasonably articulated.
All right, I, I have to say that I had concerns with both letters, um, and I'm not sure it's gonna play well with the council, uh. Why I'm saying this is first of all, um, the chaining idea. Remember now that if this goes through. The units on the corridor route will be zoned multi-family, the units inside will be zoned single-family, so when. They try to chain a multi-family one to a single-family one. They're ru, running up against ones that are zoned differently, and I doubt very much it would be allowed under that principle, because they are zoned differently. So it would likely be blocked, uh, unless someone has said, no, this isn't gonna happen, I'm. Sure the council's gonna say, there's no need to do this because it's not gonna happen, that's what they're gonna say. Um, the next point is that a lot of the issues over parking, over schools, they are consequent issues. They're not things you address in a zoning text amendment, they're. Things you work out once the amendment is passed, and the, you look to see how you can accommodate schools for the. An additional population, what you do, um, you work out parking requirements, there are some things there that are real and good. I absolutely do not believe that the parking requirement should be reduced for these buildings, it should stay as it is, which is two spots. It should stay as it is, which is two spots per unit. I think the idea of allowing parking in the front for the ones along the corridors is the right thing to do. So there are some things that are good there. A lot of it, though, the council is just going to say no to. By the way, when you say the CCFH is not going, is, is, is not against this, they sure write everything to imply they really don't like it upfront.
No, sure.
They don't like it, but they're realistic.
They're realistic, yeah.
And they're being realistic. Robin, I disagree with you that you work out some of these issues later on. Part of, one of our whole thing of AHSI is that there are no studies. There's no infrastructure. They never spoke to, and still haven't. To, you know, to water, electricity, schools. There's no, there's, there's no planning and you have to plan when you do.
Well, I agree on storm, I agree on stormwater, but in fact, what they're going to say is that that is up to the permitting department to ensure the stormwater requirements are met. That's how the council will answer it.
It's the same, you know, the Bethesda Fire Department, you know, like it's going to really impact, you know, it could potentially impact response times because the traffic that's going to be, you know, not only the, the additional residents, but also the traffic patterns on Wisconsin are going to make these response times much, much slower. And to your point, like, I think that those are the things that have to be studied. Like, we barely have, like, you know, we don't even have a twenty-four hour ambulance at the Bethesda Fire Department. And, you know, we, they're, they're covering a lot of people here. And so, you know, it will definitely impact everything with that, that Wisconsin corridor.
It's totally irresponsible to not have done studies beforehand.
That's right. I mean, I think, I think that the argument that these are consequent, to me, it doesn't hold. You're right, ZTA is not the place to deal with these issues. However, the proper way to have done this was to have amended the area master plan, seen what each area can accommodate, and then tailor the ZTA to do that. Bottom line is that they have done this backwards. They've gone straight to a ZTA. They haven't bothered to look at the area master plans. They haven't bothered to amend the area master plans. And now we're stuck with a ZTA, which is a one size fits all. I mean, it's quite possible that one block of some corridor can, another block cannot. But that's what area master plans are supposed to be for. So to me, the fact that the council and the planning board have done this the wrong way, it now seems quite ironic for us to say, well, the ZTA is not the place to be.
What, what, again, they're going to say is that this is a highly urgent affair, that we are desperately short of affordable housing for. And moving through the process of the master plan is far too slow to address what is a very immediate problem.
But there's no affordable housing.
Yeah, you're right, Robin. It is what we're going to say, but it's not truth.
Just because, just because they're going to say it to me.
We don't have a housing shortage.
What, what you need is something that will stop them short is what I'm trying to say.
Well, we, we're not going to get that.
Well, I, I think, you know, my view would be, I would rather we submit our own opposition to the ZTA. I think we should be direct and we are not in favor of the ZTA. My concern with all of these proposals is that they all stem from a master plan that was conceived pre-pandemic and pre-Doge impact on the county.
Yes.
The master plans philosophical underpinnings are dated. And they don't reflect the current reality, evolving reality of our county. And so these are all well-intentioned people, but they are operating under a broader master plan that I don't think applies anymore. And I think that's why we are all deeply dissatisfied with how it plays out. And in the opposition to the, or the sort of engagement on the affordable housing piece, it was very obvious that there are alternative ways to increase housing that is, you know, under, the county council is under investing, including using public lands. And those ideas seem to be in the background. They are not aggressively pursued. And so I would be in favor of us conceding of our own opposition letter that says we are not in favor of this. These are our reasons. And I'm always in favor of that and we should do that. The second thing I would say, just one quick thing. This is because they are operating under that original master plan, we will, having ZTAs, keep having proposals that we will be concerned about in terms of how to impact the quality and character of our town. So unless we have a proactive approach to this, in, in partnership with neighboring towns, we will be always reacting. So to the extent that we have the appetite to be proactive, I think we should dedicate some bandwidth on that. Because I don't think we, we can be, there will be another ZTA. This is an easily politicized issue. We are actually in a very unfavorable position politically for a variety of historical reasons. And so we will always be reacting. So if we have a way to be proactive about this, it will go a long way. So one, I'm ready to ask to sign, I'd rather sign, do our own letter.
Okay, I think what I suggest. I would like to sign the letters. If you really, if you and Robin really feel that way, I would like you guys to write a letter and we can talk about it.
No, 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 I, I, I'm not opposed to the letters. I just think it's always better for us to do our own letter and define what we are opposed to. That's all I'm saying.
I, I get that.
You know, and I think it's good for our council to do that as a council.
You guys can work on a letter.
I think, I think that, yeah, I think that, I, I agree, I agree with you that the problem is that, you know, the whole planning process is, is out of step with reality. And it is very unfortunate that the county council and the planning board have wasted the last three years not revisiting the reality, but instead constantly coming up with one.
Well, they're stuck, they have to implement against that.
But they've had plenty of time to, you know, come to term the reality and come up with a new plan. I think that, you know, my own view is that simply because council members will, will reject or disagree with the content of this letter, therefore we should not endorse these letters. To me, I don't see the point of that. I think if something, you know, makes sense, we should endorse it. Not, not whether it is going to be acceptable to the council members or not. The bottom line is that we don't know actually at this point where the council members are going to be on these amendments. As I said, the original ZTA was actually not as bad as all the amendments that the planning board has put in. So none of the cosponsors on the county council are wedded to reductions in parking. None of the county council members are wedded to corner lots. By the way, the question of chaining is, is, I don't agree with you. In fact, the, if you look at the recording of the March or the, whatever, nineteenth PHB committee meeting, the county, the county council attorney has confirmed that chaining is legally allowed. It would become multifamily dwelling. What she did clarify is that the county would be unlikely to approve it because such chaining has very strict criteria, such as topography, special circumstances, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The point that I think that all of us are making is nobody trusts the planning board because they have been doing all kinds of things that are not sensible. And they would actually possibly approve chaining using certain criteria. But the county attorney has confirmed it is permissible and it has, is very rare to happen. But the facts on the ground are changing with the planning board. They could well approve this such change.
I think the intent is very, so one quick thing I would add very, very briefly, Robin, is that we, we, it's very clear what the intent is. The long-term goal is to deepen density in these areas. This is the long-term goal. You know, it's, it's just, it's all baked into the master plan. And so these are all phases and steps in that direction. So I remain unconvinced that, you know, like, whether it's chaining or not, there's an inevitability in this. And so I, I would be in favor of opposing the ZTA as is. You know, and I would be favor of us as a council submitting that as a viewpoint. That would be my view. I'm not saying that, that doesn't mean we don't endorse these letters. But I just think that we need to draw a very clear line in the sand is that this, we can't keep having these piecemeal battles, which is a separate issue. But we should take a very strong position that this stems out of a planning logic that is outdated. It's not in favor of the future of the county. It's, it's designed to correct errors of the past. It's just not designed to build us into the future. That's why we are stuck. And we should just be very clear and oppose these plans until they revisit and come up with a better master plan. That would be my view.
My view is that we should, we should write a very short cover letter to the council saying, you know, on these lines, literally one paragraph. And then say, we, you know, as, as, we, we endorse what these two civic organizations.
Because of this reason, because, yeah, we are unconvinced.
Not a separate letter with our own.
Fine, no, I, I cannot endorse these letters. They are.
Okay, well, the issue tonight, the, the issue tonight is whether you're going to put this on the July agenda to vote on as a council or, or you can all, or you can all decide to individually sign on to those letters or not. And let me remind everybody that we are a member of the coordinating committee.
Yeah, I'm in favor. I think there are at least three, four members, I thought. But Robin, I respect your view and so we should, when we have the council session, we can discuss more.
Right.
No, I mean, if, if the rest of you feel that we should endorse them, then obviously that's majority and that's that. But I, they're not going to go anywhere is what I'm telling you.
Anybody's welcome to come to the CCCFH meeting tomorrow night. If you want to link to it.
Oh, it'll, it'll be a Zoom meeting. Oh, yeah, I, I, you know, I'd go to those.
Tomorrow is our anniversary, no way.
Well, we want to keep that.
I think your point, Robin, is well taken, that it probably will not go anywhere. That's subject to, you know, reasonable people can disagree because as I said, not all of these issues are things in which the sponsors of the legislation have bought into. So it is quite possible that we can peel away the votes. If, if this letter was saying, note the ZTA period, I agree with you, this would be a total waste of time. I still don't think it's something we shouldn't do because sometimes you have to take a matter of principle.
Yes, exactly.
But, but in this case, it's not just a matter of principle. I believe that in practical terms, at least some of these amendments, we could, we could get six council members to support that. It's quite possible that can happen.
It'll be political for a while.
Yeah.
And make a political judgment.
I mean, Andrew Fritzen has said one thing before and, you know, and now is withering. So I think.
Who is the sponsor?
The sponsors of the ZTA are, well, the cosponsors of the entire initiative are Fritzen, Fanny Gonzalez, Norian Sales.
Everybody but Mink and Jawanda.
No, it's six of them. So five did not sponsor it. I don't know.
No, I think they, well, the original sponsors, but the ones, everybody voted for it except for Mink and Jawanda.
No, no, there's been no vote on ZTA twenty-five oh two.
No, I need to put it all forward.
There are, there are six cosponsors. Fritzen and Fanny Gonzalez. As, as the two members of the Planning, Housing and Parks Committee, their, their offices drafted, and Norian Sales. And Kate Stewart, council president, and two others whose name is escapes me, have signed on as cosponsors of the Work, Housing Now Initiative, which includes the ZTA as part of the package. But as I said, when the, when the committee, when the parks, the, you know, the housing committee started discussing the ZTA for the first time in a couple of months ago, the planning board started making all these recommendations that made it worse from our perspective. And the objective of these two letters is to tell the county council, hey, reject all of these amendments and provisions that you're hearing from the planning board. Kind of stick to what you did originally. So I don't agree that it's a, it's a, it's a fool's error. Because all we're telling them is, hey, as you have seen the letter, you said these things at the beginning. Now don't start going down this path, which the planning board is advising you to go. And I think that's, I think they need to hear from communities that.
Well, my view is we hold a hard line, so anything within their hard line is acceptable.
I'm, I'm happy to draft our own letter. You know, with Kabir, you know, I have, obviously, it is, the situation has changed in the county since even the ZTA was proposed. And they need to take a step back and say, what does that mean for what we're trying to do now? And that's really what we need to convey to them. And that's it.
I think we should just sign on to the letters and move on.
So anyway, I think we would.
But anyway, we'll.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to put a, uh, put a draft cover note, which I can share with folks.
That would be great.
Okay.
That would be good.
All right. Okay, we, we can move on then to the report by the town manager. So when you're ready, EJ.
Thank you. For the council, why don't you summarize the report or you just like to ask questions?
Give, give, give us brief summaries so that we can, we're prompted to ask questions.
So first, the USSC this month prepared two sidewalk spots, including a one orange trend up again. And then.
My children wrote in concrete. He turned into a forever. Good, good job.
Seven sidewalk spots have been set for replacement. I'm working with them to finalize the date, but it should happen hopefully this month. If not, at the latest, there'll be practice in the next work session. A company called Precision Concrete Cutting, which has done work in town before, completed a survey of the fence sidewalks and I didn't buy two hundred and three spots that can be shaved to eliminate trip hazards, noted defects. I won't go down the whole list, but it is there, a simple look at it. And like I said, within two, I was just in contact with them today. And we're currently scheduled, but I'm asking if we could get moved up. So it should be before the next work session, the latest. The traffic study around several of our intersections and straightaways is ongoing. It should be completed and the findings reported at the July work session. And in Binton Park, on June fifth, a group including safety manager Justin, Dr. Feather, council president Barr, council member Connor, members of the PNRC and Jet Blade contributed to walkabout with Binton Park. And then the next day, I also did one with Dr. Feather and resident William Brenner. And using those informations, me and Dr. Feather are all working together to prepare a brief to guide this plan for Binton Park because so far this project's been interesting because it's become much more of a bigger thing than initially expected, just by how many people care about it. Just great. So we want to make sure we do it carefully. And so once we have addressed that, PNRC will be able to comment on it. And then at the July work session, the council will have, be able to discuss it and add their own thoughts on it as well. And happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Any, any questions on, we can start, you know, do it in parts. One question I have is where did the traffic study come from? Because it's bigger than we had ourselves recommended that you do or said to do.
Yeah, so this study has basically three parts to it, or I guess came from three different sources. The biggest one was, of course, the Public Safety Committee had come to the council, some recommendations. And the council wanted the study done in response to that. And then the mayor, myself, several other members of staff, including the attorney and council member Connor, that were representatives of the Somerset Elementary PTA, who brought up their concerns as well. And and so that's kind of the, and then finally, I wanted them to take a look specifically at the speedhumps because our speedhumps are in need of repair. And so while they were doing everything else, I added the speedhumps into that. So that's how the scope of work came together.
All right, thank you. Any other questions about the traffic study?
I have a few. On, on sidewalk repairs, I know that Dewberry had, in their report, recommended certain standards for the sidewalks. Three eighth inch, one fourth inch. I don't know what all these different things were. So I want to make sure that whatever work is done, especially by precision concrete cutting with the two hundred and three spots, that this is going to be consistent with Dewberry. Is Dewberry going to be involved in advising you and overseeing this? So that's one question. So that's one question. On the, on the traffic study, I think that, I mean, I noticed that there's at least one area which is overlapping with Dewberry, which is this question of determining what upgrades are needed to existing sidewalks, ADA ramps to bring them in compliance with ADA guidelines. This was also in the Dewberry task one. So I want to make sure that we're not getting recommendations on the same subject from two different consultants. Also, the traffic study, I think it's, I would suggest that at some point that you consider appropriate. But before a recommendation comes to the council, that the Public Safety Committee should have the opportunity to either have a meeting with the traffic group or have a chance to look at their recommendations before it comes to the council work session. There's, there's a lot of traffic stuff in here. As Robin said, this is a much bigger thing than, than some of us thought was going to be done. And I think, I've got to say, I think the Public Safety Committee is a bit surprised, got their surprise at the scope of the work. And they have, they didn't provide any input to the scope of work at all other than those two intersections, which was the original genesis of doing this. So I think it's important that we get feedback from that committee before it comes, anything comes to the council. The last point, just, just to clarify, is when can we expect the Ivari contract on pedestrian scale lighting to actually start work? Because I don't see a timeline for that. You're just kind of, thanks.
So any sort of questions? First, Dewberry is involved in the sidewalk repairs overseeing, helping to oversee the work and spot checking and making sure that it meets those requirements. In terms of Public Safety Committee, I'm planning on that, on that, the Public Safety Committee has a meeting on June twenty-sixth. Yeah, so I plan for that, that meeting. For Ivari, that should be, should be able to have the official kickoff meeting either probably next week. Okay, and then.
So they'll be able to work during the summer, right?
Yeah.
Because it's extremely important that they start working now when the foliage is full, full force. Okay, and speedhumps, sorry, are all the speedhumps in the town in traffic groups scope of work? Or only the ones on, um, that endorse it?
Only the ones on doors.
Only on doors. Thanks, thank you.
Have you, could you share the deliverable from Dewberry with the whole of the council so that we can all see it? Thank you. The very contract for pedestrian scale lighting to know what kind of lighting they're going to use? Is it going to be LED? Or is it going to be solar powered? Any questions like that?
What about we, what the. They need to look at the lighting situation as it exists now. It's what they make those recommendations.
All right. And so are they concentrating on dark spots in town? Or are they concentrating on lower lighting that is more helpful to pedestrians?
Lower lighting is helpful for pedestrians.
Because there's still dark spots in town. That is true. All right. Any other questions on the Ivari contract or on the Dewberry deliverables? Binton Park. We all saw it and all I can say is that we paid as much attention to the parks as we are going to the pool. The parks would be, the park would be in much better shape. It's not in good shape at the moment. Obviously, we need a new forest plan and that's what EJ is trying to work towards. But if you want to walk through it and notice the ivy close, growing up trees, if you want to walk through it and look at the very bare hillsides that we have, if you want to look and see where there are no shrubs growing, it's all there for you to see what I'm saying. So we need to do some work on that. All right.
I had two things. The Dewberry, this is the main study. This is, so this is the first deliverable on the main study. I just worried we, I lost track of that. But so that's a huge step. That's a big deal because part of what we wanted to do was to have this master plan from Dewberry to then proceed with any road and sidewalk developments and maintenance moving forward, correct? Is that, that's, but I'm surprised that the, is this the full list of improvements?
No, those are just the ones that, that were identified by Dewberry as like top priority.
Interesting, that's very interesting. So, okay, so when you share that full report, we'll get the full sense of what they have recommended. Okay.
We should read that report too.
Yeah, I think this is the most, this is, this is why things have been delayed because we wanted this plan to execute. The second is on Binton Park. I understand that there was a previous study.
Yeah, twenty thirteen.
Yeah, so you have that? Okay, awesome.
All right, any other comments on the manager's report?
Just thanks to him for all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll hear a motion to adjourn.
Well done.
So I have a question that has nothing to.
We're adjourned.